I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Present.
Mr. Kessler.
Present.
Ms. Mills.
Present.
Mrs. Rettman.
Present.
And Mr. Turpin.
Present.
Item number two, special recognition, pledge of allegiance, Mr. Eric Nantua, Asher Potite, and June Louelf. Louelf? June Bug.
Really excited to introduce these kiddos. Sorry, guys, I'm a little loud. Man, I always try to find kiddos that I get to pick, so I try to find a couple kiddos that stand out to me. And these kiddos immediately stood out to me. They are exceptional young people. And when they go into a room, they light it up. And they treat others right, treat their teachers right, treat their peers right, and they are just great. I promise you, they're going to be successful humans. They're just great kids. So, we're going to start with, do y'all do the pledge first, or do we do the, okay, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, and Asher Potite, would you like to introduce your family before you do that?
Yes, this is my dad, Asa Potite, and this is my mom, Chelsea Potite. My dad is a teacher and coach at the high school, and my mom is an online teacher for Epic Schools.
I would now ask if you could stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I would like to share a couple things that I love about the Owasso Seventh Grade Center. So, to start, I love the amazing staff there, whether it's the teachers, principals, lunch ladies, janitors, and just about everybody involved that makes the Seventh Grade Center the amazing school that it is. Everybody there makes you feel loved and cared for because they really do love and care for you. I always feel safe and comfortable there, as well as all of my classmates. I am very, very thankful for the amazing people working there and everything they do for the school. As much as I'm thankful for the staff, I'm equally thankful for the freedoms and perfect conditions students at the Seventh Grade Center are given. For example, our new schedule includes flex times that are gives, that give students the choice to go outside and get energy out, or stay inside to study or do homework, which is very helpful and can relieve so much stress if you get behind on your work. Every decision that the school makes is for the welfare of the students, and I felt the impact, and it's made my view of schooling this year so much better. I'm very excited to go to school every day at the Owasso Seventh Grade Center. Thank you for your time.
June, come on up kiddo, why don't you introduce your family?
So, on the right is my brother Evan, and then I have my mom, Jillian, and my stepdad, Matt. Good evening, my name is June Louef. I'm super proud to be in Owasso RAM at the Seventh Grade Center. The word of the month is sincerity. Sincerity means to do what's right with transparent motives. To me sincerity means to be genuine and honest with all of your efforts and interactions. You can always show sincerity to your teachers, parents, and coaches by showing true dedication and being truthful in everything that you do. I would like to thank Owasso Public Schools for always teaching me how to be sincere in everything that I do. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. June and Asher, would you please come forward and take a picture with the board? Thank you, Mr. Nantua, June, and Asher, families. Item number three, special recognition, Dr. Chris Barber.
Good evening. Every year, the state of Oklahoma has a really prestigious award, the highest honor it gives for the arts. It's the only award that takes all of the art disciplines and puts it under one umbrella. And so, you know, I like to brag on how we have more All-Staters than any other school district. Well, making All-State is just the first prerequisite to even be in the running for this award. Or, there's over 2,000 students that make All-State every year. This award whittles it down to another 140. And I'm honored that we have seven recipients from Owasso High School this year. Unfortunately, they can't all be here tonight because all of our performances aren't over yet, but I do want to introduce them all, and then the ones that are here, if you could come up here, please, for recognition. First one to thank is Mallory Sepulveda, in theater. She can't be here tonight unless she showed up. Nope, okay. Braden Zeder, in band, I think he's at a concert as well, unless he's here. All right. I think Gabby is here, Gabby Ortiz, in visual art. Come on up, Gabby. Anderson Washam, from, in visual art. Cameron Wilson, in visual art. Ella Powell, in visual art, and Joy Woodman, in choir. Oh, Ella Powell was in choir, sorry. I should have known that. I wrote you a letter. So, I'd like to congratulate these students for being recognized for the Oklahoma Arts Excellence Award this year.
All right, thank you, students. Would you guys please come to the front and take a picture with the board? Congratulations. Thank you all for being here. Item number four, reports to the board. Item A, Superintendent, Dr. Margaret Coats.
Thank you, good evening. And I do want to start off with a special recognition for us. And I noticed, you noticed on the agenda that you called Mr. Barber, Dr. Barber. So, I just want to say congratulations to Chris Barber for earning his doctorate. That is very well deserved, and I know all the time and effort and all the trials and tribulations to get that doctorate degree, so congratulations. I'm going to start off with spring activities, fine arts. We've been going to and seeing all of the choir and band and music programs. It's just been so many this summer, and, I'm, summer, this spring, and our kids are so talented. We saw an example here tonight, but just so special to see them in action. Athletics, congratulations to our baseball team for winning their regional, and we wish them luck this week as they play for another state title in Jinx. Congratulations to our track team this Saturday. We had over 20 student athletes qualify for the state tournament. Fifteen of those were regional champs, so very, very impressive. And it was just a beautiful day for a track meet on Saturday at our new facility. And then, boys golf begins state play today at Forest Ridge. And boys tennis, is that regionals? Do we know how they've done? Finishing up, as we speak. So, we may have some updates on, on our tennis team and who's making it to state. Next is just a bond update. I've been bringing that to you every month. We've been meeting with parents and teachers and administrators, the city, the chamber, and community members across the district to thank them for their investment in OPS, to provide clarity around proposed capital projects, and to answer questions and seek any additional feedback. Up to this point, we've received more than 16,767 points of engagement through meetings and surveys about how the package can be improved. What we've learned is the number one concern is the total cost of the proposition and the worry about tax, a tax increase. We've listened to the input and made revisions that reflect what matters most to Owasso residents. We plan to present a revised proposition or proposal to the board for approval next month in June. That is a lower dollar amount. That meets the needs of our students without increasing taxes for our local residents. We'll be asking voters to invest in critical improvements in the areas of safety, academics, athletics, and the arts, including many of the important projects that were proposed earlier this year. There's still work ahead, but I feel confident about our direction because we're moving towards it together. Special Olympics, please make note of this, we'll do our athlete send-off this Wednesday at 8:00 AM at the high school. Again, Wednesday at 8:00 AM. Also, another date is June 17th. If you're interested in supporting the Owasso Education Foundation, the Patriot Golf Classic is on that date. And then, last month, I talked about some bills, and I want to give you a legislative update. Right now, we have 24 education-related bills that have either been signed into law or currently on the governor's desk, the House floor. We have 11 bills that passed to the House floor and returned to the Senate. And we have 12 bills that passed on the Senate floor and returned to the House. So, we're still monitoring those. If all bills pass and sign by the governor, we'll have more than 47 new education-related laws. So, some bills to keep, some laws that haven't, that bills that are now laws, that we've been watching is Senate Bill 139. You've probably heard this one, bell to bell, no cell, no cell phones. And so, that will go into effect next school year. It is now law. So, we will be required to write policy, and we'll be bringing those, that new policy to you for approval. This bill says that all schools are mandated to do it the first year, and then after the first year, we will be able to revise as needed, that policy. Senate Bill 758, this eliminates virtual days. This is now law, and this goes into effect not next year, but the year after. So, school year 26-27, we will be having a calendar committee meeting tomorrow. And knowing that this is now law, we will make adjustments to that calendar for the 26-27 school year and bring those to you for approval in June, most likely June. That's what we're shooting for. And then, House Bill 1732, this is a good one, I think, and Zach will be happy, athletics will be happy about this, and, and our fine arts too. Provide schools the right to broadcast all high school athletic activities in which the school's athletic team is participating, even if the OSSAA is also broadcasting. So, that's, I think that's a good one. Senate Bill 652 reduces the number of election days for any jurisdiction to five days a year. This has passed in the House and has returned to the Senate, so we're hoping that the Senate will, will approve this and move this to the governor's desk. House Bill 1466 requires that the State Board of Education provide school districts with an opportunity to appear before the board, the state school board, before implementing any recommendations regarding accreditation status for deficiencies. So, this is good. And this one is going, will be going to the governor's desk. So, in other words, we have due process. If there's going to be an accreditation deficiency, we'll be able to go to the state school board to state our case. House Bill 2288, we were hopeful for this one. This was the retire, rehire bill. So, if we're, it allows teachers basically to double dip here, stay here, and do that, instead of earn their retirement and go across the state line and work at Arkansas. It did not pass. It is dead for this legislative session. And then, Senate Bill 6 moves school board elections to November. This was not heard. So, right now, it is dead for this legislative session. We need to watch this one closely because this could sneak its way back before sign-die day. So, we'll be really keeping our eyes and ears open for that. And then, finally, graduation. Can you believe it? We're at the end of the school year. It's already here. Graduation is next Tuesday, May 20th, at ORU. Please arrive by 6:15 or 6:30, and we'll have your caps and gowns, or your gowns there, ready for you for a 7:00 PM start. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. Item B, teaching and learning, Mr. Mark Officer.
Good evening, good to see you guys. Summer school kicks off June 2nd. We're excited about all those activities going on at Mills Elementary and the Sixth Grade Center. Swing by one of those days if you'd like to see fun times by all. Enrollment is increasing in the elementary spark camps, and we're narrowing down the elementary summer school and getting that going. And then, also, Owen has, has a group enrolling for his, his camps too. So, we're excited about that. Also, as Dr. Coats mentioned, graduation next Tuesday. It's an exciting time. And then, grad bash. I believe it's in every board member's contract, you're required to stay the duration of grad bash till 3:00 AM at incredible pizza, poker and such. So, yeah, no, we'd love to have you guys swing by and see grad bash. That'd be amazing. It's a fun time. Special services, we have our send-off next week. That is quite possibly the best event of the school year. Encourage you to come out to the east campus about 8 o'clock and, and cheer on those guys as they get on the buses. And then, the summer games are occurring, the 14th through the 16th, in Stillwater. And then, for fine arts, middle school choirs and middle school band named best overall groups at the Music in the Park and the Heartland Festivals respectively last weekend. Again, the hits keep on coming for fine arts. They're doing just an amazing job. And then, middle school bands and choirs, concerts are this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Officer. Item number C, district services. Mr. Kerwin Kerner is not here, so we will defer to Mr. Mark Knowlton and Mr. John Beckloff.
Hey, I got the button. Step one. Jordan, if you want to, just, the photos aren't in any specific order, but we were able to host a fine dining etiquette lunch over at Barnes Elementary. It is an old tradition of SEDEC, so we're bringing it back. It's one of my favorite things because we're able to have a very personal group of kids, and we feed them lunch, but it, it is a five-course meal. Chef Doug, he cooks everything right there for the kids. An example is that top-right photo is a homemade deconstructed smore. So, he actually made the marshmallows and then toasted at tableside for the kiddos. So, not only are they getting a great meal, while we're, we're feeding them, we're teaching them how to eat. That's kind of an art that our kids have lost, is eating at a dining room table. So, we purposely did foods that are hard to eat, such as pasta. We gave them the full long noodle, figure out how do you, how do you twirl on a spoon, the chicken breast on the bone, how do you eat around the bone, even finger foods. And then, the, the starting course was a Caesar salad in a Parmesan bowl. And so, again, all those, those components were there just to give the kids great food, but also an experience. And they got to eat with their principal, their assistant principal. It was just a great time. And it's one of the, the, my goals for next school year is to bring this to every elementary school. That way, we can hit all of them at least once a month to, to bring this, this great experience, one of my favorite programs, back to, to Owasso. And now, Mark.
Construction update. All right, so Hudson, so some pretty pictures. That's the exterior looking towards sped. It's actually prettier than that picture shows. That's inside.
Flatbed semi stuck in the parking lot this morning. Are you aware of this?
I was not aware of that. Was it ours?
No, it's not a room. Believe me, I got a couple of calls on it. So, it was stuck in the, in the parking lot, and then it finally got out of there and went down and parked in another area that kind of blocks some people that drop their kid, like to walk their kids up and get out quick. So, I didn't know what happened. I didn't know if you guys heard about it.
No, we hadn't heard anything about it. We're, they're really pretty good about staying out of that area during pickup and drop-off. It happens. I'll find out tomorrow. That's looking at the stage area. It's now all drywalled in. We've got paint. We're actually starting on ceilings. This is looking down the sped corridor. That's looking back down what used to be outside, looking at the windows. So, over the next month, they're going to drop in ceilings, lock up the doors, and it'll start actually looking like a full-blown facility. This is track. So, this weekend, we hosted regionals. Coach Parker took this picture as he was leaving that evening and sent a thank you to everybody because the facility was just top-top, just top-notch. And he got a lot of compliments on it. So, he was very, very happy with it. I think that's it. Any questions?
I think you'd have one.
Yeah, well, don't get me started. Hudson, when's the completion date?
They'll be finished in late July, but they'll actually be done late June. Then, we'll have a month of punch lists and owner furnishing move-in. Way in advance of school.
Thank you, Mr. Knowlton and Mr. Beckloff. Let's see, item number D, continuous strategic improvement, goal area two, RAM team, Mr. Philip Storm.
Thank you, and good evening. So, goal area number two is RAM team, which refers to recruiting and retaining the best half we can for our school district. So, a few data points related to these goals. We have set goals for both our own job fair and attending external job fair. So, our internal job fair, we did host right here in this space on April the 3rd, and we had a decent turnout for that. We've had at least one hire for sure from that job fair. So, to me, that makes it worth it. External job fairs, we have attended 10 of those so far this year with various staff from the district attending. We had four that we attended in the fall, six that we've attended this spring. So, 10 of those at all of our area universities to have a presence there and to get our brand out there. So, even if we don't hire that applicant now, perhaps they remember us, and maybe in a few years, they, they realize they want to be here at, at Owasso. So, also, we have a goal related to our employee referral program. So, we have a program that allows our own employees to receive up to $250 if they are able to refer someone who becomes a successful applicant and, and works for the school and stays here for a period of time. So, this year, we have had a total of 55 of our own employees that have been able to receive that employer referral program. So, again, we think that's working, that's effective, and helping us find, find applicants for our jobs. Also, we had a goal in this area related to our compensation plan, just how we communicate that. So, first of all, we do communicate that for new hires when they're first coming onboard and being onboarded. But also, just to let you know, we have a process every fall in October. We send out what's referred to as a certified information sheet, and every one of our certified employees receive this. And it's more of a detailed breakdown of their pay and how to understand their pay and what it's, what it's comprised of. So, that goes out in the fall to all of our staff to help communicate that. We also talked about some targeted increases this year. So, to remind you, this year for 24-25, we did have targeted increases for our special education teachers. We increased that stipend from 5% of the salary scale to 8% of the salary scale. We had some targeted increases for our security personnel where we added days to their contract to increase that total compensation for the year. And we also had some for the bus driving pay scale this year as well. Also, the subpool, we've talked about that some. Our goal this year was to increase that subpool to help fill those positions when needed. So, I can report to you that as of today, we have 209 individuals signed up to be a part of that subpool as compared to 180 at this point last year. So, that represents about a 15% increase in the number of available subs. That fill rate is still not as high as we'd like it to be, but at least we have more people that are available to, to fill those roles. And last but not least, we had a stated goal of looking into adding a counselor this year, and, and we did that at the beginning of 24-25. So, So we do have that additional counselor at the high school that's helping with the college and career planning. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. Item five, Comments from the Public Regarding Agenda Items.
There are none.
Item six, Consent Agenda. Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Following Consent Agenda Items, Dr. Coats?
Yes, thank you. As you know, these consent agenda items represent renewal contracts and renewal agreements with vendors that we've had agreements with in the past. I'd like to bring your attention to two items. The first one is a teaching and learning item, so six C twelve, six C twelve. And this is an agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Rehabilitation Services. And we would just like to remove this contract from the agenda at this time. I believe Charlene has intentions to bring that back later in the fall. And then we'd like to make a correction for, in the technology section, which is six E two, six E I I, six E two, and just a corrected cost for the United Systems renewal of the VX rail support. The corrected amount is $65,487.42. And I believe it has been corrected on the agenda, but it was, it was, there was a difference with the attachment. And so the attachment has been corrected to match the agenda item. So the first one is remove the teaching and learning agreement. And then the second is a correction for the technology item.
Before we get into discussion, I'll go ahead and make the motion to remove the consent agenda item six C twelve, the agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Rehabilitation Services, transition school to work, work study for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year from the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Mills. Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Coincidentally, they never finished the stage when they built it originally because they hit the water where the pit is. You have the big open area there. There actually was supposed to be a stage rounded off into that area up to about three feet before the front seats. And then when they went ahead and just filled it in flat, they never completed actually that stage. So we're getting one that can actually be put up and taken back down so we can have that. And then when you can, so it'll be a portable extended stage for the whole front pit area. It's just never been there. We have room in the back. Where it used to be, they built for costumes that the fire marshal quickly said, we can't have costumes there once we filled it. We moved all that stuff out. We don't really store costumes as much anymore because we rent them. So that is all cleared out in the back and we've moved all the choir risers and the risers there. From the people I've talked to, that they say really, you leave it up more than you take it down. It'll be up most of the year and then you'll take it down for the musical or things that actually use the front pit. But it will, if you've been to a sixth grade band concert or the larger band concerts, we can get everybody on stage. And this will extend it out about another ten feet. Well, thank you.
I move we vote to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Wait.
I open to change your motion to approve the consent agenda items six A through six G one with the corrected cost item on sixty-two United Systems renewal VX rail support for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year to $65,487.42.
I yield to your amendments.
Motion's been made. Can I get a second? Is that a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
And now, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is that, okay, that's what that was. Okay, I'm tracking. We're good, we're good. Okay, item seven, Communication Superintendent, Dr. Margaret Coats.
Yes, Mr. Corbridge has an item for us tonight in this area.
Item A, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Contract Addendum with Final Site for Mass Messaging Services for Three Years Beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five and Ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-eight at a yearly cost of $18,500 per year as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the service agreement.
Thank you. Good evening. So yes, Final Site, it's a contract addendum. As you'll recall, Final Site is the provider for our web hosting services. So they also do, they also have a mass messaging system as many of the website providers now include that. Or I don't say include that, but they have those services as well. So Final Site is doing the same. This would replace School Messenger as our district's main mass messaging system. And there were a couple of things that really made this Final Site service stand out. Specifically, it's much more mobile-friendly. Currently with our system, we're pretty well tied to a laptop, which obviously is not always the case where someone's able to be at their desktop at a laptop to send out a message. But much more mobile-friendly, there's also just some different features, some additional features and extra space for text messaging, extra characters in our text messaging. So we've been really thrilled and excited with the service and support we've gotten from Final Site on the, on the website end and just excited to expand, or the potential to expand services with them. And so yes, this, again, as I said, a contract addendum. It will mirror the length that we have left on our website agreement. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So I'm clear, this is, this is district communication. This is not like a sports U replacement. This is just something for the district to be pushing things.
That's correct. This would replace School Messenger. So and in full transparency, School Messenger was in the consent agenda last month, which was approved. But obviously, we would not continue with School Messenger. We're not going to pay for two messaging systems. We would discontinue with School Messenger and stick with this Final Site group.
Mr. Corbridge, in Subcommittee, we talked about the cost, the cost of this being a little bit higher, but we're actually getting more. Can you speak to that just a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, I think, again, it's, we just believe it's a better product, first of all. And why we feel that way, again, ties into a lot of the mobile capabilities of the system. And so as an example, like right now, if you wanted to send a message to, like if you're at Hodgson, you're the principal, and you want to send a message to all Hodgson third graders, the only way you'd be able to do that on your phone through the app is if you had pre-made a third grade list, which nobody's gonna, they're not gonna have that. So without a pre-made list, you're unable to use that mobile-friendly, or you're not able to use that mobile app. And so we've just found that a lot of our principals are on the go a lot, obviously, doing lots of amazing and important things. And so having the ability to be able to do that work on their phone is big. So with this, it kind of works as like the Gmail app almost. You'd be able to start a message on your phone and say you need to just go do something else. You can, you know, hit save, shut it off, and maybe have some more time later on at your desktop and your laptop. You can pull it right up. It's right where you left off. And vice versa, if you're in the middle of something, excuse me, on your laptop and something happens, you gotta shut your laptop and run out the door for whatever reason. Fire alarm got pulled, something, you can get outside and pull up your app and it's, you can pick up right where you left off. So that's a big thing. And again, we'll have some additional characters available to us for text messaging. And that sounds like such a small thing, but we've found that with a lot of places, it's expensive. School Messenger was gonna ask for a decent amount of money to up our character account from one-hundred-and-sixty to, I think, three-twenty. And this gets us around, we're about two-twenty with this Final Site. Excited about that. They threw that in for free and also threw in the startup cost. They're not charging anything for startup. So there's some other things. I mean, if we want to, if you're okay, I'll keep going. Social media is, there's a tie-in with social media. So you can, you can start a message or have a message crafted. And there's different tabs that you can hook in your social media. So you can basically craft it all out and get to a point where you press send and you could send it to parent email, text message, and then your social media feeds, like kind of all in one. So again, it's a little more efficient. We feel like the service is going to be more user-friendly and hopefully our folks will experience that and maybe they'll use it more, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the addendum for the Final Site for Mass Messaging Services for Three Years Beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five and Ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight at a yearly cost of $18,500 per year as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the service agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
And Mr. England.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbridge. Item eight, Teaching and Learning, Mark Officer. A, Board to Review Policy one point two-two B for First Reading. Edits, Changes, and Additions to the Policy are outlined in the attachment.
Yes, your recent experience with the appeal process has caused us to want to tweak that just a bit, make it a little bit more user-friendly, we believe. So this first reading is about just tweaking that appeals process, specifically what would constitute a reason for a community member to appeal to the board.
So I assume this does not apply to our appeal process that's underway right now since it's not been approved. The old procedure would be followed.
Yes, sir. The current appeal process, the one that's underway right now is under the old policy because of when it originated.
Okay, since that's a first reading, we'll move on to item B. Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on a Contract with Amira Learning for the Amira Learning Suite Site Licenses for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year at a cost of $126,520 as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Yes, this is kind of a replacement. Amira actually bought out I Station. That's the one we used last year. It was also a large contract. This serves all K through five across the district, provides reading data for site teams to be able to support students where they need support. And it'll also provide some instructional items that go with that data to help improve students' reading. Specifically, this relates to the K through three requirements, state requirements in SRA.
So you said this is a replacement for I Station. Amira just bought I Station out?
Yes.
So that's the only real change, do you?
Yes, sir. It's a little bit more expensive because it's a year later, but, you know, everybody, everything, right, correct.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract with Amira Learning for the Amira Learning Suite Site Licenses for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year at a cost of $126,520 as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Mills. Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin. Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
Item C, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Quote with Teach Town for Training for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year at a cost of $800 as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the quote.
Yes, this provides some professional development that's needed within the Special Education Department.
I move we vote to approve the Quote with Teach Town for Training for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year at a cost of $800 as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the quote.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. And Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Item D, Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Contract with Shelby Staveley Caruso for Speech Language Pathology Services for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year at a cost as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Yeah, as you've noticed, we contract with various outside vendors to meet needs within the Special Education Department. And Ms. Caruso is one of those vendors. This is for next school year.
I thought, when I read it, I thought that this was for extended school year.
I apologize.
Is that just for this, this summer?
It's just for the summer.
Okay. Do we need to?
And I apologize, I was on jury duty last week and some of this was submitted and I didn't get to read over that.
Okay. Do we need to correct that on the motion since it's? Do we need to table this? Okay, we can correct.
I yield and yield to correct it. I yield to kneel to correct it.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Shelby Staveley Caruso for speech-language pathology service for the extended 2024-2025 school year at a cost outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Well, it's actually, so it's twenty-four, twenty-five, the way our E S Y, so it would be twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, actually, because we'll have a session in June and then we'll have a session in July, so I'm sorry.
And then I'll correct that to add, E S Y, thank you, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Officer. Item nine, finance. Mr. Philip Storm.
Thank you. So the treasurer's report that you have in front of you for this month represents July through April. So that's ten, ten months worth of data. So we're getting closer to a full year's worth of numbers here. So as you look through that for the general fund, you can see that our revenue is about a million and a half higher than it was at this point last year. And our expenditures are about two million higher than they were at this point last year. So that certainly, I think, reflects the budget that you saw at the beginning of this year. We're still right on track to finish where, where we thought we would. In the building fund, you can see that we are slightly ahead. Revenue is slightly higher than expenses, so that's a good place to be at this point in the year in the building fund. And child nutrition fund is not. Child nutrition fund is about two hundred and fifty thousand higher in expenses than revenue. But again, that was planned this year. The state has some fairly strict guidelines on how large of a fund balance you can have in the child nutrition fund. So our child nutrition fund is intentionally spending some of that beginning fund balance on some equipment and updating some equipment so that they can get their fund balance back down to where the state wants it to be. Yes, sir. We do a little bit of all that, but mainly a money market account that we have. And we've just recently switched to a different type of account that allows us to maximize that interest. But yes, primarily, it's a, it's a money market account with our depository bank. Well, that's, we are earning interest on that money, but. Well, the state allows us a little bit of flexibility on how we actually record that interest revenue. So we made the decision that since primarily the main operating bond fund this year is Fund 31, so we're taking all of the interest generated through all of our existing bond funds and putting it in Fund 31, rather than putting a tiny bit in 33, and a tiny bit in 35, and a little bit more in 39. So we're putting all of that interest into Fund 31. But the money in Fund 39, yes, is earning interest. Yes, yes. I, I'd be happy to get that to you. I can't quote that off the top of my head. I don't want to say it wrong, so. You're welcome.
You mean, you don't have all of that memorized? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the treasurer's report for April 2025.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. And Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. Item number 10, executive session. Vote to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the hiring of one individual as the eighth-grade center assistant principal, as authorized by Oklahoma statute Title 25 subsection 307b1.
I make a motion, we convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the hiring of one individual as the eighth-grade center assistant principal, as authorized by the Oklahoma statute Title 25 307b1.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. And Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Okay, item 10B, acknowledge return to open session. And item 10C, statement of executive session minutes. During the executive session, the members of the Board of Education who were present were Stephanie Ruttman, Rhonda Mills, Neil Kessler, Brent England, and Frosty Turpin. Also present during the executive session was Dr. Margaret Coats and Mr. Mark Officer. During the executive session, board, board members discussed the hiring of one individual as the eighth-grade center assistant principal. Nothing else was discussed and no votes were taken. This will constitute the minutes of the executive session. Item 11, board to consider and take possible action to hire one individual as the eighth-grade center assistant principal. Yes, thank you. I'm excited to recommend tonight, Mr. Jake Bray as assistant principal at the eighth-grade center.
Make the motion to hire Mr. Jake Bray as the eighth-grade center assistant principal.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
And Mr. England.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Jake Bray. Mr. Bray, do you have anybody here with you tonight? So congratulations, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Welcome back. Item 12, new business?
There's none.
Okay. Item 13, comments from the public regarding non-agenda items. Each individual will have five minutes to share their remarks related to the specific non-agenda item received in writing by the board minutes clerk seven days prior to the board meeting date. The total time allotted to comments from the public regarding non-agenda items will not exceed fifteen minutes. A, Mr. Doug Hall.
In the March meeting, I brought this request. Have operating plans and costs, both capital and annual, including busing, considered in making full-day PK decision and the attainment method. Since I have done this kind of work in the past, I offer to help. In the April meeting, I again brought this request. This is possible expansion of the request. In your packets, I have put the first page of an email where I detail more of my desire as it has evolved. Having now looked at the overall situation, having asked many, many questions, the logical conclusion I have, if you want a full-day PK and if you want it in-house, is that the fifth-grade center isn't the best way to do it. The fifth-grade center may offer other slight benefits, but not likely worth the extra costs. Based on my numbers, which are the best I can do with limited information, but which stand until someone offers other numbers, numbers using better data from district cost reports, numbers using the present cost workups for the fifth-grade center, and using computer-assisted bus routes and costing various transportation alternatives. The fifth-grade center costs an extra ten to twenty million dollars to construct and on an ongoing annual operating basis, a half a million dollars extra to run, compared to expanding at multiple elementary schools using a safe-structured dual-useful day PK concept. A page of numbers is in your packets. It would seem easier to sell the voting public on safe structures over not putting safety first. On the front desk, there is one handout showing how the district can be open, transparent, and give the voters choices on the September bond question. My preference is that there should be five propositions allowing voting public to put their stamp of approval on each issue. One, necessities. Two, full-day PK. Three, fifth-grade center or safe structures instead. Fourth, seventh and eighth-grade buildings. And fifth, PAC and soccer complex. Then there are a couple of ways to still offer the voters more choice rather than a single all-or-nothing vote in that packet. In the packet is a backup for the maintenance costs on an annual basis. Dollar fifty per square foot for running maintenance costs. For utility costs, I've used a dollar fifty per square foot. And for custodial costs, I use two dollars per square foot. The more square feet built, the higher the ongoing costs forever. And with no offsetting increase in revenue if there is more built than is actually necessary. For extra administrative costs, two hundred thousand per year has been consistently used for the fifth-grade center with no pushback. Also in the packet is a little bit on millage. Due to the huge spike in property valuations the last several years, most owners will face increasing capped values and increasing taxes for many years. This may give the district funds. On busing for the fifth-grade center, maybe it's possible for a two-bail system with 54 drivers. The current busing plans allows the elementary schools super-high levels of service performance, and it is possible that drastically reducing the service levels, enough routes can be freed up to run fifth-grade service to the one location. For example, Ator has very little of its service territory outside one mile and could likely be served by only one bus route instead of four or five bus routes. There is already a crossing guard at Main and 86th and one north of Ator in Ator Heights. For Hodson, adding a crossing guard at 145th Avenue East and 86th Street could allow fewer bus routes to serve Hodson. Mills can probably get by with just one bus route. Starting to pick up children 50 minutes to an hour before school instead of possibly 35 minutes and pushing the number of students on each bus towards 70 or so, the capacity, may allow reducing the number of buses, especially at Barnes, Morrow, Hodson, and Stone Creek. One or two buses could possibly be saved at Bailey, Northeast, and Smith. If the current 54 routes can be carved back to only 40, perhaps 14 routes are available for fifth grade and those can pick up 600 fifth-grade students over 72 square miles of the district. In the package, there are multiple alternatives for a two-bail system that are likely to be rejected and a probable outcome with a three-bail system. As previously stated, I am happy to be proven wrong and to assist with the work. My hope is that the district staff will offer multiple alternatives to the board, with each alternative having a timeline showing expected dates of construction as far into the future as necessary to have safe structures at every elementary school, that these alternatives have initial construction costs as well as ongoing annual operating costs specified, so the board knows the financial impact of the decision being made. Also, this process be transparent and the information be made public with multiple bond propositions, so the public can have an informed input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Item 14, vote to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Mills. Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.